All right. All right. So.
Okay. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Could the City Clerk please take attendance?
Six members of the council are present. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holly Tilton-Burne is joining via conference call. Councilmember Bonnie Specker is absent this evening. Also joining via conference call is City Attorney Vince Jones.
Thank you. All right. Item three, approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion is second, and there's a comments from the public on the upcoming agenda. Council, have any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Tilton-Burne.
Okay. Motion passes. Executive session, item four A, executive session pursuant to STCL 1-25-2, one in parentheses, for discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term "employee" does not include any independent contractor. I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.
All right, we're going to get started on the regular meeting. We're on open forum in order to provide equal access to all during the open forum and public comment portions of the meeting. Each individual offering comments shall not exceed the allotted three minute period. The podium light turns green to yellow and where there is one minute remaining, your time of her comment has expired when the podium light turns red. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Action on the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, is there any public comment on consent agenda items? Council have any questions or comments on the consent agenda items? Holly, I know you're on, comments, questions at all?
Nope.
All right, thank you, please call the roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tildenburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
All right, presentations and reports, introduction of promoted city of Brookings employees. And Samantha Beckman will do our introductions.
Actually, she's the one I'm introducing.
She's getting introduced, there we go.
Yes, it's my honor to introduce Sam as the Assistant City Manager. Sam started with us roughly three years ago and we're taking away two little words to the, but that comes with a lot of responsibility and new leadership with our organization. For the past two and a half, almost three years now, Sam's really been an integral part of our organization, really a key component to our leadership team as well, providing guidance and direction when necessary, but also leading major projects such as the downtown master plan, co-leading the biggest project we have, and that's of course the budget for next year as well. She's done that in stride and she always has a positive attitude. Most importantly, what I'm really excited for is the future, the future of city management, the future of leadership here in South Dakota. Sam has told me that she's interested in being a city manager someday in the future, not anytime soon, but with that said, we have a lot of people exiting this profession. And I think just as Brookings is seen as a community across the region, the state, the nation to an extent, in building leaders, we're building leaders here in local government. I'm so excited for Sam because Sam is going to be an even better city manager than I could ever be, and I know that to be true for Sam. And in time, I'm excited for her to take on that role, but we still have quite a few years left. But I'm very excited about Sam taking on this promotion and being the Assistant City Manager. Sam, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, obviously very grateful, and Brookings is a great community, especially said, if anybody's seen my LinkedIn post, I said city management is where, or Brookings is where I found out about city management, and so it's really exciting to, can I continue this opportunity here? And never miss an opportunity to say kudos to our staff, they're really the ones that kind of help drive forward the city and couldn't do it without them, so thank you.
All right, comments from council, questions? Holly?
Nothing from me.
All right, congratulations Samantha. Oh, there we tucked back, Lisa, Councilmember Hager.
So I just want to congratulate Samantha on this promotion, it's very well deserved. So for anyone who doesn't know, Sam was one of my former students in state and local government here at South Dakota State University, so I get to be a very excited council member for her, but also a very proud former professor as well, so congratulations.
All right, Anna Hunt is not here, so we probably won't have a SDSU Student Association report. Move on to ex official reports, Wayne Avery has a BMU report.
Yes, I do, I think I've said this before, but I'll probably mention it again, is that the, the utilities meeting that I attend, and then Bonnie and I take turns attending, is approximately about four hours that we spend there, and we probably go over close to a hundred pages of information, have staff reports and everything. So when I come here and, and want to condense that into a two-minute deal, it's, it's difficult. So you hesitate to, to cover certain topics as you're afraid that since you're not the expert on that, you might not give all of the pertinent information and cause more trouble than, than you need to, so I'm going to keep it fairly brief here. I think there's real value in us being there, that we get to sit in that room though with the, with the BMU staff and talk about different issues, and they, they, even though we can't vote on things, we still can have input and, and hear what they're working on, so I think it's, it's really valuable. The one takeaway I had from this last meeting was the water treatment plant, the 34th Avenue Water Treatment Plant update of the contractual, our contractual substantial completion date for the 34th Avenue Water Plant was October 13th, 2025. Contractor continues to work towards achieving this milestone, they haven't got there yet, but they're still, still working on that. The good part of it is that the seven day demonstration period began on November 17th and has been successfully completed, so BMU staff has continued to operate the plant since that time. As of December 9th, the BMU staff had three weeks operational experience with the new water plant, so things are going good, few things that still need to be tuned up. There was another discussion about some ongoing requests for bids for some pipeline projects, and the indication was that the environment is getting more competitive and that some of those, there was more bidders right now, more people looking for work, and the costs seem to be coming down, so that might bode well for some of our other projects that we're working on. The total investment in that plant, the water plant, which could change by up or down somewhat, $114.7 million, so that, that was quite a project, and it looks like it's, it's going to be serving us for a long time.
All right, thank you, and Lisa and Bree, I understand that the hospital board did not meet this month? All right, move on to contracts and change, or no, no, take that back, take that back. We have a presentation from 3M, Jim Burkhardt and Solventum Plant Manager, this director will provide us an update.
All right. Thank you, my name is Jim Burkhardt, as you said, I'm the Site Director at Solventum here in town, I appreciate you having me here tonight, I'm going to give an update at our PFAS mitigation at the plant in town. All right, so through our ongoing monitoring, we've been monitoring for several years now, the data is beginning to show improvement, so we're really encouraged by that. I'm going to, I'm going to touch tonight on, on some of the history that we've had behind this, to kind of remind everybody where we started, our ongoing monitoring activities, which are going to be included in a report to the state this coming April. I'll talk a little bit about some progress we've made on stormwater treatment, and then the 2025 progress plan. All right, so most folks have probably seen this photo before and this update, you know, we started back in 2022, late summer 2022, we identified a, a leak on our fire suppression system, it was underground, right, so, so this leak, we reported that leak to the state and made repairs. Since that time to present date, we've, we've done a lot of work related to sampling groundwater, soil, stormwater, surface water, as part of our overall investigation through DNR supervision. And each year we've submitted those various reports, both to the state and to the city. Kind of the update here tonight.
I would say there's some.
It's been a very good high light camera.
Uh?
Yeah, so you're on pretty good, uh, high light camera.
Well, I thought. The wall took a break, see? So James, James did.
I did.
I'm sorry.
My suit.
I didn't know that.
Hi.
You're gonna make it easy.
Kind of feel like they're here.
No, it was just more of this stuff.
All right, we're gonna get started on the regular meeting. Uh, we're on open forum in order to provide equal access to all during the open forum and public comment portions of the meeting. Each individual offering comments shall not exceed the allotted three minute period. The podium light turns green to yellow and where there is one minute remaining, your time of comment has expired when the podium light turns red. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Action on the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? See none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, is there any public comment on consent agenda items? Council have any questions or comments on the consent agenda items? Holly, I know you're on, uh, comments, questions at all?
Nope.
All right, thank you, please call the roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
All right, presentations and reports, uh, introduction of promoted city of Brookings employees. And Samantha Beckman will do our introductions.
Actually, she's the one I'm introducing.
She's getting introduced, there we go.
Yes, uh, it's my honor to introduce Sam as the Assistant City Manager. Uh, Sam started with us roughly three years ago and we're taking away two little words to the, but that comes with a lot of responsibility and new leadership with our organization. For the past two and a half, almost three years now, Sam's really been an integral part of our organization, really a key component to our leadership team as well, providing guidance and direction when necessary, but also leading major projects such as the downtown master plan, co-leading, uh, the biggest project we have, and that's of course the budget for next year as well. Uh, she's done that in stride and she always has a positive attitude. Uh, most importantly, what I'm really excited for is the future, the future of city management, the future of leadership here in South Dakota. Sam, uh, has told me that she's interested in being a city manager someday in the future, not anytime soon, uh, but with that said, we have a lot of people exiting this profession. And I think just as Brookings is seeing as a community across the region, the state, the nation to an extent, in building leaders, we're building leaders here in local government. I'm so excited for Sam because Sam is gonna be an even better city manager than I could ever be, and I know that to be true, uh, for Sam. And in time, I'm excited for her to take on that role, but we still have quite a few years left. But I'm very excited about Sam taking on this promotion and being the assistant city manager. Sam, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, obviously very grateful, and, um, Brookings is a great community, especially said, um, if anybody's seen my LinkedIn post, I said city management is where, or Brookings is where I found out about city management, and so it's really exciting to, can I continue this opportunity here? Um, and never miss an opportunity to say kudos to our staff, um, they're really the ones that kind of help drive forward the city and, um, couldn't do it without them, so thank you.
All right, uh, comments from council, questions? Holly?
Nothing from me.
All right, congratulations Samantha. Oh, there we tucked back, Lisa. Councilmember Hager.
So I just want to congratulate Samantha on this promotion, it's very well deserved. So for anyone who doesn't know, Sam was one of my former students in state and local government here at South Dakota State University, so I get to be a very excited council member for her, but also a very proud former professor as well, so congratulations.
All right. Um, Anna Hunt is not here, so we probably won't have a SDSU Student Association report. Uh, move on to ex official reports, Wayne Avery has a BMU report.
Yes, I do. Um, I think I've said this before, but I'll probably mention it again, is that the, uh, the utilities meeting that I attend, and then Bonnie and I take turns attending, is approximately about four hours that we spend there, and we probably go over a, close to a hundred pages of information, have staff reports and everything. So when I come here and, and wanna condense that into a two-minute deal, it's, it's difficult. So you hesitate to, to cover certain topics as you're afraid that since you're not the expert on that, you might not give all of the pertinent information and cause more trouble than, than you need to, so I'm gonna keep it fairly brief here. Uh, I think there's real value in us being there, that we get to sit in that room though with, with the BMU staff and talk about different issues, and they, they, even though we can't vote on things, we still can have input and, and hear what they're working on, so I think it's, it's really valuable. Uh, the one takeaway I had from this last meeting was the water, uh, treatment plant, the Thirty-Fourth Avenue Water Treatment Plant update of the contractual, our contractual substantial completion date for the Thirty-Fourth Avenue Water Plant was October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, contractor continues to work towards achieving this milestone, they haven't got there yet, but they're still, uh, still working on that. The good part of it is that the seven-day, uh, demonstration period began on November seventeenth and has been successfully completed, so BMU staff has continued to operate the plant, uh, since that time. As of December ninth, the BMU staff had three weeks' operational experience with the new water plant, so things are going good, few, uh, things that still need to be tuned up. Um, there was another, uh, discussion about some, uh, ongoing, uh, requests for bids for some pipeline projects, and the indication was that the environment is getting more competitive and that some of those, um, uh, there was more bidders right now, more people looking for work, and the costs seem to be, uh, coming down, so that might bode well for some of our other projects that we're working on. The total investment in that, uh, plant, the water plant, which could change by a, uh, up or down somewhat, a hundred and fourteen point seven million dollars. So that, uh, that was quite a project, and, um, it looks like it's, it's gonna be serving us for a long time, come, so.
All right, thank you, and Lisa and Bree, I understand that the hospital board did not meet this month? All right, move on to contracts and change, or no, no, take that back, take that back. We have a presentation from 3M, Jim Burkhart and, uh, solvent and plant manager, this director will, uh, provide us an update.
All right. Thank you, um, my name is Jim Burkhart, as you said, I'm the site director at Solventum here in town, um, I appreciate you having me here tonight, I'm gonna give an update at our PFAS mitigation at the plant in town. All right, um, so, um, through our ongoing monitoring, we've been monitoring for several years now, the data is beginning to show improvement, so we're really encouraged by that. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch tonight on, on some of the history that we've had behind this, um, to kind of remind everybody where we started, um, our ongoing monitoring activities, which are gonna be included in a report to the state this coming April. Um, I'll talk a little bit about some progress we've made on stormwater treatment and then, um, the twenty twenty-five, um, progress plan. All right, so most folks have probably seen this photo before and this update, um, you know, we started back in twenty twenty-two, late summer twenty twenty-two, we identified a, a leak on our fire suppression system, um, it was underground, right? So, so this leak, we reported that leak to the state and made repairs. Since that time to present date, we've, we've done a lot of work related to, um, sampling groundwater, soil, stormwater, surface water, um, as part of our overall investigation, um, through DNR supervision. And, um, each year we've submitted those various reports, both to the state and to the city. Um, kind of the update here tonight, right, we're gonna talk about, um, basically from the end of last year and then through this year, um, where we've taken additional samples, um, and, um, and then in the, I'll talk about the installation of our water treatment system, which was done this year. All right, so I've got three slides, um, that kind of talk about our sampling, um, each slide maybe talks about a specific topic, the first one is soil and groundwater, um, then I've got one slide on surface water, and I have a slide on, on stormwater. Um, so, um, the picture on the left side, which is on the right side of the, of the photos, of the side of the slide, but the left picture shows where we have taken additional soil samples this year. Um, the additional soil samples were all taken on our premises, and so if you, just to kind of give folks, um, it's a busy, it's a busy picture, right? Um, the main part of our plant is shown towards the middle of that photo there, um, the very top is our entrance at Orchard Drive, and then the big kind of white rectangle, um, that's trailer parking that we have, that would be, um, I would say just to the east of the kind of the row of pine trees that we have on Twenty-Second Avenue. So the majority of the samples were taken to the north and west side of our property as we hadn't really scoped that area out before, um, and then we also took some samples, I would say more towards the west of our site, we've taken previous samples in that location as well, um, and most of those additional ones I just spoke about are closer to our A triple F storage building that we have in the plant. The right picture, um, on the screen there shows three off-site, um, groundwater wells, um, which were southeast of the existing wells that we took, um... Yeah, you can kind of show it here, so our, our site is not really shown in this drawing here, I would say that the main landmark that maybe I can talk about that shows up is, is, um, Mickelson School is kind of right in the middle of that, and so we took, um, samples to the south and west, I think it's Twelfth Ave, um, in each of those orange circles. So, s- surface water was ongoing this year, most of these data points, we've taken previous samples, so we're starting to build a little bit of a track record, um, as to what we're beginning to see, um, and so if you look at, I would say these are hexagons, right, one through nine, we've, we've, we've sampled those locations previously. Um, over to the lower left, um, items number ten and eleven, that's additional sampling that was requested this year, um, that's taken kind of at the corner of Madera and, um, Twentieth Street South, right? So I think ten is right along Twentieth Street South, and then eleven is up a little bit upstream, um, along Madera Avenue, if that makes sense to folks here, so those would have been the two new ones that we saw. The results are gonna be included for each of these, are gonna be included in the April report, we're starting to see some improvements, I would say, um, some areas, we don't have a lot of data, it's the first data point we've taken this year, so it's hard to make any conclusions relative to that, um, samples on the golf course look good. All right, I'll pivot to groundwater sampling here, um, and the groundwater results that we took, these were done the first half of this year, um, really consistent with what we've seen in previous years of sampling, so no significant changes. Um, the highest level of concentration has been the area that we've seen in the past, which is in that green circle, um, that is located on our property, um, we would call it Outfall Four, but it's the, the, the stormwater outfall to the, um, southwest of our property, actually southwest of the plant, but kind of just the west central of the property, okay? Um, and so in conjunction with the, the DNR, we did implement a stormwater collection and treatment system in that area, so right where that, that green circle is located, and I'm going to talk about that, um, on the subsequent slides. All right, so, so late twenty twenty-four, we began construction of a collection pond, and you can kind of see it here in the picture, if you look closely, it's kind of towards the middle of the picture, if you're looking towards the horizon, you can see some water in the pond, and it was installed late twenty twenty-four, um, but we put the system online right after the, um, the winter melt-off and the beginning of this year. And so the process was to be really removed a lot of soil in that area, the soil that was in that area is right again where, where the green circle was on the previous drawing, where our high levels, hi- high, um, PFAS readings on soil and groundwater were taken, and so we, as part of the project, we cleaned all that soil, we backfilled with clean soil, um, we installed a berm, which is effectively a dam for the water that, the stormwater that exits the site to the southwest of our plant, and then the captured stormwater then runs through a filtration system, which we turned on this spring. So this slide talks a little bit about, um, the treatment system, it uses, um, filtration, granulated activated carbon and resin in it, um, we essentially pump the water from that containment pond, and it pumps through these, um, filters, and then is discharged to our stormwater through the outfall, what I would call Outfall Four, but it's that direction to the west of our plant. Um, through the course of the year, um, we treated about five and a half million gallons of stormwater with a greater than ninety-nine point nine percent removal rate, um, and so we're really happy with the results that we saw, so this has been a definite improvement to, I would say, surface water concentrations leaving the site. So the twenty twenty-five work progress plan, um, is contained, and I've talked about most of the items, um, is kind of summarized on this slide. We installed the three new nested wells, those were those orange circles, right, that I showed on one of the first slides that I presented, so those well, that well completion is done. We've done additional soil sampling, um, to the northeast, or excuse me, northwest side of our site, and then concentrated a lot of sampling near what we would call our existing outdoor A triple F storage building, um, we've got future work planned around that, and so we want to understand what soil, um, we need to remove when that work is done. Um, the stormwater treatment system was operational this spring, um, there is some additional work that's being done in coordination with 3M, right, they're, they're doing assessment of, of, um, pumping rates and volumes of, of off-site wells, uh, within a radius of the site, and then evaluating local subsurface utilities, I, I don't really have an update on those two bullet points, but those are part of the package that will be sent to the state in April. Um, and then, um, again, um, we, we've typically had a, a, twice a year, we've sent an update to the state, and in twenty-six, um, we'll be sending just one update to the state of South Dakota, that'll be due this coming April, and we will copy the city and BMU as we've done previously, um, when we send that report up. Uh, that's what I had for slides here and for an update, I, again, I maybe before I wrap up, I just want to thank the council and the city for, for cooperation on this, and we're, we're committed to continue to work to, to improve our, and to reduce our impact to the city and the community.
Thank you, Jim.
And I can answer some questions if you've got any.
Are there any questions from council, question, comments? Holly, do you have any questions?
Sorry, on mute, no.
Um, Jim, I just, I got one question, and when you're taking samples from wells and stuff, is there a third party doing this, or are you guys, I mean?
Yes.
How is that process done?
Yeah, so there's, um, 3M is still involved in this, but they have a third-party, um, I'll call them a consultant, bar engineering, who coordinates all the sampling, um, they run their samples through another third-party lab, so they don't analyze them themselves, but, but bar engineering is kind of running point as far as.
Okay.
Um, coordinating all those sampling and, and making sure they get done.
All right. Councilmember Doran.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just wondered, did you state, is, is this going to be like the testing and the reports to the state forever ongoing, or is there going to be like a final report to the state, or what does that look like moving forward?
That's a, that's a good question, I mean, right now, we've, you know, we're, we're starting, we get, there's not a lot of data, right? It feels like a lot, but when you take a sample once or twice a year, it takes quite a while to build data, um, I mean, I, my expectation is we'll remain open until the state agrees that we can close this, close the spill report, I'm not a hundred percent sure when that date'll be, but we're just, we're following the direction, and we continue to take samples and make sure we update them on our progress.
Sure, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments from council? Thank you very much, Jim, I appreciate you guys being as transparent as you are.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Okay, now item eight, contracts and change orders, item eight A, action on resolution twenty-five dashes one zero one, a resolution authorizing change order number one for twenty twenty-five dash zero one SWR sidewalk maintenance project, Brock Contracting, Charlie Richter, our city engineer, will present this item.
Uh, good evening, council, as your city engineer, I'm here tonight requesting approval of resolution twenty-five dash one oh one for change order to the twenty twenty-five O one SWR sidewalk maintenance project. This project is part of the annual sidewalk and inspection project, and entails replacement of sidewalks throughout the community. The requested change order is for additional sidewalks replaced for homeowners, for homeowners and for boulevard tree damage sidewalks, which were identified after the bid was let. The change order totals nine thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, which equates to approximately an eighteen percent increase to the, to Brock's contract of fifty-two thousand... Oh, sticky paper. Fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. There are sufficient appropriations in the capital projects fund and special assessments fund for this change order, Public Works recommends the change order for Brock Contracting to be approved.
All right, thanks, Charlie, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public comment on this item? Council questions, comments? Holly?
No, sir.
All right, please call the roll.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
All right, on to first readings, item nine A, introduction and first reading on ordinance twenty-five dash zero four two, an ordinance authorizing budget amendment number nine to the twenty twenty-five budget, Ashley Renshaw, our financial director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, this is ordinance twenty-five dash zero four two, amendment number nine to the twenty twenty-five budget. This amendment updates the budget to reflect revenues and related expenditures, along with one allocation of reserves. It includes an additional fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars in fire insurance premium reversion, which is passed through the state to support the volunteer firefighter retirement plan. Twenty thousand dollars from the South Dakota Community Foundation passed through to the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce, and forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars from the general fund reserves for ancillary costs tied to the previously approved downtown parking lot acquisition, including environmental testing, rental fees, and administrative or closing costs. These adjustments ensure both compliance with the state law and that the twenty twenty-five budget accurately reflects actual revenues and expenditure needs. The second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for December sixteenth, and I'll stand by for questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, any public comment on this item? Council questions, comments? All right, move on to the next item, item ten, second readings and public hearings. Ten A, public hearing in action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero three nine, an ordinance to rezone Lot Three of Block Two of Tellcamp Industrial Edition from an industrial one, or I one R restricted district to an industrial I one light district, Mike Struck will present this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, ordinance twenty-five dash zero three nine is our ordinance rezoning a city-owned parcel in the Tellcamp Industrial Park on the east side of the interstate, it's roughly a five and a half acre parcel, and, uh, the I one R district is a, it's a industrial restricted district that has, um, a little bit heavier, uh, emphasis on landscaping requirements, in addition, there is, uh, maximum lot coverage, um, in, in that particular district. Uh, as we've seen with some other properties in the vicinity, um, just the distance and proximity from Interstate twenty-nine, um, it, it's roughly almost nine hundred feet away, we don't feel like it's located along the primary corridor, and then it would be appropriate to rezone it to the I one, which doesn't come with all of those additional restrictions. Uh, this is something that went to the planning commission, comes to you as a unanimous recommendation, and staff supports the request, and we'd stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public, an open to public hearing on this item, is there any public comment? Council questions, comments? All right, please call the roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Item ten B, public hearing in action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero four zero, an ordinance for conditional use permit to establish an office in a residence R two, two-family district, seven oh nine Main Avenue, Mike Struck will also present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, uh, the ordinance before you tonight is for conditional use, authorizing an office located within a residential R two zoning district, uh, the location is just north on Main Avenue, north of, um, Sixth Street there, or north of Seventh Street, actually, uh, in this area, it's primarily residential structures, however, we have seen, um, a similar property adjacent to this, just recently go through the same process to establish an office use. Uh, the applicants are proposing to establish a counseling service, um, within this existing residential structure, there's, at this particular time, uh, there are no changes proposed to the exterior structure itself, uh, I believe they do show the ability that, uh, with some of their clientele, they may want to install an accessible ramp from the alley parking to the rear entrance of this particular structure. It's, some of the conditions that are associated, um, with the conditional use is that it is for, uh, the applicants, um, only, so it's non-transferable. Um, in addition, um, they are proposing that it's just be limited to three suites, and so with their particular, uh, business model, um, they kind of have three different areas of specialty, um, and, and that's really all they want to, to focus on at this particular time, uh, you know, the indications are, is, you know, of their clientele that they work with, um, maybe half of the visits will actually occur at this facility, the other ones, they go to the clients, and even with that, they're talking minimal of, you know, potentially one to three or four clients per day amongst the, the three specialties, so, uh, the co-applicant is in attendance tonight, uh, this does come to you as a unanimous recommendation for the planning commission, staff supports the request, and we'd be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Open to public hearing on this item, is there any public comment? All right, council have questions, comments? Holly?
No, sir.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
All right, item ten C, public hearing action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero four one, an ordinance to rezone northeast corridor, northwest corridor, excluding outlet A in section three dash T one oh nine N dash R fifty W from the residential R three apartment district to a residential R one A single-family district, addresses one, one 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 five, West Twentieth Street South.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, uh, the action before you tonight is a rezone on a property located along, uh, West Twentieth Street South, um, we're kind of familiar with this, as this was previously rezoned to an R three property along with, uh, large-scale residential development plan. Uh, the development team has, um, reconsidered and are proposing to rezone this back to an R one A, which is a low-density, single-family residential zoning district, uh, comes with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, minimum lot frontage width of, of at least a hundred. Their intentions is they would like to pursue, um, small acreages down in this area, looking somewhere in the ballpark of twelve to fifteen lots, it's just over thirty acres, but by the time you, um, deduct the right-ofways and storm drainage facilities and such, uh, it, it would fall, um, with a R one district, with a minimum of three acre, it, it just wasn't gonna work with them to get the lots, so the minimum is fifteen, but it gives them So the minimum is fifteen, but it gives them the flexibility that they can do various sizes from three acres to one and a half acres and such, and try and, and get, hit that, you know, preferred lot number of somewhere in that twelve to fifteen range. The applicant was not a, well, the applicant was concerned about the weather. They are watching from home. They are available. If we have any questions, I can call them on their cellphone. This does come to you with the unanimous recommendation from the planning commission, and the staff supports the request, and with that, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mike. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, public hearing is open on this item. Is there any public comment on this item? Council, any questions or comments on this one? Council member Wendell.
I might just note, for the benefit of those that have sort of been interested in this property and its development over time, that this is a shift back to a different zone, but this is just zoning, and so there'll be an opportunity, of course, to evaluate the design in the future and to continue engagement, but I just know that this is one that people are sort of interested in, and this is just a decision relative to zoning this evening.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Holly, do you have any comments and questions on this item?
I do not.
All right, please call the roll.
Avery?
Aye.
Doran?
Aye.
Hager?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to item ten D, second reading in action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero three seven, an ordinance setting the annual election date for either June, or we will talk about this also in ten E, the same item would be in November. Bonnie Foster, our city clerk, will present this item.
Mayor and council members, I will give just one summary for both items. Both ordinances, twenty-five oh three seven and twenty-five zero three eight. So before you are two ordinances to set the two thousand twenty-six election date for the municipal, municipality of, the city of Brookings. Those dates that we are limited to would be June second or November third, respectively, with the ordinances. This change arose out of the state law that came out of the two thousand twenty-five legislative session, and a new election date for the city must be chosen by January fourteenth. I stand by for any questions.
All right, the first question I'm going to ask before I even ask for an amendment, or a, a, a motion, is can we just have someone state a motion for which month they prefer with the second?
We need to act on both of the...
Or do we need to do both of them?
...cases individually.
All right, so let's go with this. Entertained a motion to approve annual elections on the tenth, on June?
The motion to approve would open the floor for discussion. A vote could still be taken where you vote no, just to remind you.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Holly, do you, are, are closed public comments? Holly, do you have any comments on this?
Um, I think most of my comments will probably come in the next section, but I would just have the intent of not voting for June instead November.
Okay, any other comments from council on this item? Please call the roll.
Doran?
No.
Hager?
No.
Niemeyer?
No.
Tilton Byrne?
No.
Wendell?
No.
Avery?
No.
All right, motion fails. Item ten E, second reading in action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero three eight, an ordinance setting the annual election date in November. Bonnie Foster will also present this item.
As I stated earlier, I gave you one summary, and I stand by for any questions you may have.
All right, entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public comment on this item? Council, any questions, comments? Council member Doran?
Thank you, mayor. So Bonnie, I know that last meeting you said that we're focusing on just the date, and I agree that that is what the vote is. So I do have some questions that I know we've just talked about in the public and other partnership meetings, and I know the school board discussed last night, so I, I'll ask the questions, but if you're like, not at this time, we, we don't know that, we're still figuring that out, that's, that's okay. So the first one is, I just wanted to affirm, there's been conversations around the cost of the election, and it sounds like a plan was proposed, a potential percentage, if we were on the same ballot and we used the same equipment from the county like we're doing now. Is that one of the options? Are we still working through what that cost will look like, or what does that look like with this change?
That is currently what is being discussed. There was a meeting held yesterday. It was a joint meeting of the, the city, the school, and the county. There was applicable staff, and governing elected members were also present. There was a twenty-five percent off the top, which was proposed, that would be divided by all of the entities combining on a particular election date, and that twenty-five percent would cover the normal election workers, use of equipment, maintenance of equipment, those things that have to take place at every election regardless of what it is. And then there's a seventy-five percent that was proposed, that we would then be based on a pro rate of how many items a particular entity has on the ballot, so how many bubbles on the ballot. So for say, for example, if there was ten items, or let's go twenty items on the ballot, the city council has two items, so then we will pay ten percent of that seventy-five percent. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep. And then a follow-up of if the county doesn't have an election, so those odd years, when it would most likely just be us, would we run the election just like how we have been right now, with still using their equipment and polling place, and would all that cost be on us at that point, or what does that look like in the odd years?
Correct, so in the odd years, all of the expense would be incurred by the city, so we're looking between twenty and thirty thousand dollars for an election cost in the odd year.
Okay, and remind me, is that pretty typical to, like, when we've had to do special elections, when it's just us, that's around the cost of one?
Yeah, last, in two thousand twenty-five, in our April election this year, we spent twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was a combined election between the city and schools, so you divide that number in half, so each of us only spent around twelve thousand dollars this year for election expenses, but to go on our own for a November election will eat the whole cost.
Sure, okay. And then two more questions that I have. One, are we looking at, and maybe we currently do, have a formalized agreement with the county of all of these logistics, or will we be, I don't know if we currently do, or if we will be creating one with this change?
There will be an agreement forthcoming that would be handled administratively. If for some reason that needs to come to council, we can do that as well.
Sure, I'm, I'm fine with that administratively. I was just curious. And then my final question is, you know, I know we've had a lot of discussions around if we would be on the same ballot and all the variations. It sounds like with this partnership, we will be on the same ballot. Do, have you received any guidance from the state or the county of what that looks like of making it clear that this is a nonpartisan race, because this does change that we will be on a partisan ballot now?
There's been no direction from the secretary of state's offices to that.
Okay, do you know, will they come with some? Are they currently, are you waiting on an opinion from them, or submitted a question about that?
I am not sure that we're going to get anything out of the secretary of state's offices to the level of that. We're just going to have to wait and see at this point in time, but it is a question on everybody's mind on how that's going to be represented on the ballots.
Sure, yes, I understand that ballot format and design has a pretty significant impact on the outcome of an election, so I'd be curious to, to hear from that. Otherwise, I have a statement, but I'll, I'll wait to see what the rest of the discussion looks like. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions by council? Council member Avery?
Just a comment, I mean, for anybody out there that hasn't followed this, it wasn't anything that the cities went to their legislature and said, why do we have a problem? Because this election in April just isn't working. It's worked for many, many years. Local elections had that, that niche, where people who were interested in local elections and followed what was going on could vote in that April election, cities, the city council, the school board. Legislature somehow decided that you shall have elections either in June or in November. Didn't say how, didn't say who was going to pay for it, didn't say anything, just said you shall have it. So it's kind of a, you know, it's not the ideal situation, because we're going, we're asked tonight to vote for, we've, we've already decided we're not going to vote for June, we're going to have November. We don't really know what we're going to have, we don't really know what the costs are going to be, but we don't have any choice. I mean, it's just an unfortunate thing, and I, you know, that's, I guess we need to maybe express some of those frustrations with our people in peer.
Holly, do you have any comments, questions?
Um, yes, thank you, mayor. I guess my comments around this at this time echo some of what has already been stated. I think one of the elements that council member Doran was pointing out is that this cost will increase for the city, for, for our election process, at least for those odd years, and I, I am concerned about what that increase will look like. Additionally, I would say, similar to other concerns that were brought up, this shift moving whether it is in June or in November, will certainly, whether we have to list ourselves as partisan on the ballot or not, it will certainly create more partisan sentiment on the elections for both school board and city council, and that does concern me. I, as, as a city council member who's been on council for several years now, I think that there is a lot of value in having our position be nonpartisan, and I am concerned about what the impact could be if decisions for our local elections become more partisan, and so that'll certainly be something we have to watch as we go through this process. And I guess we obviously are choosing November here, and that now means that our school board elections will be at a different time than our city council elections, and that also, I think, will have an impact on, on what our local elections look like and potentially could have a impact on voter turnout for those particular elections, too. So I think there's just a lot of unknown at this point, and similar to what council member Avery was saying, we're sort of put in this situation where we're forced to make this decision. That does feel uncomfortable, and I think that in Brookings, we have had good success with our April elections, and so I hope that we continue to have that success as we have to change the date here.
Thanks, Holly. I do have a question, Bonnie. We're not required to put party affiliation on our, our part of the ballot, are we?
No, we are not. We are nonpartisan elections.
The elections can still stay nonpartisan for, for city council, I just want the public to know that, that I don't think there's any intention on our council whatsoever to start doing party affiliation things, so, with that being...
And, and I apologize if my comments made that seem as though, what I was suggesting is not at all, I just, having these elections on a ballot that, where there are a lot of other partisan elections, will certainly bring that flavor to the, the council and school board elections.
Right, and, and I was just trying to clarify that, that is the case, that we are nonpartisan. Council member Hager?
Yeah, so one thing that council member Tilton Byrne and Avery didn't necessarily mention that I think is worth pointing out is just the different context in which we're going to see our elections take place. So next year, there will be the gubernatorial race, then there'll be an off year, and then there will be a general election, so the context of what's going on with respect to state and national politics, and then local politics will just be drastically different depending on what the election cycle is. So I think that's just another unintended consequence of this particular legislation. But I do have a statement that just really explains my thought process in terms of voting no earlier on the June ordinance and planning to vote yes, obviously, here on the November ordinance. So the idea behind this state law, for anyone who's maybe unaware, is to increase voter turnout. So anyone can go back and watch our September study session, but the data confirms that turnout is higher in November with the general election than in June during the primary, when typically only one party in South Dakota has competitive races. The public input that I received overwhelmingly reinforced that data. I will say, I particularly valued the input that we received from the SDSU Students Association that said a June election would make it difficult for them to participate. I think a portion of this legislation is also geared toward trying to ensure that as many people can easily participate in whatever date is chosen, and I think it's important that our entire community has an easy ability to get to the polls on election day. I realize that the school board has chosen June, and it would be nice if the city and the school elections could have been on the same ballot, because that's what we're used to, like we're talking about with our prior April elections, and for cost-sharing reasons. So that is definitely a concern, but I do feel hopeful about the tentative agreement that has been reached. I realize that the school board had some additional considerations at play that we don't necessarily have relating to the school calendar and then available trainings and meetings with the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. But in light of all of that, the data, all available information, public input, that leads me to November really being the best choice, given the options that we've been presented.
All right, council member Doran?
Thank you, mayor. Some of my thoughts may, may echo other council members' thoughts, so I'll, I'll try to stay brief, but I absolutely understand and believe with the intent of this law is to increase voter turnout, but improving that number is a shared responsibility among the public, candidates, and election administrators, and I appreciate the many organizations and individuals that we've seen who have worked to increase voter engagement over the years. A study came out of the Augustana Research Institute's fellow program that noted in two thousand twenty-four that the biggest factor discouraging voting is actually attitudinal, so it's a general disenchantment with politics. That highlights that achieving the intent of this law and continuing to address voter turnout requires more than just moving a date and involving numerous considerations in several conversations that we've had throughout the last few months with our partners. We have had to navigate election day logistics, figuring out the polling locations, ballot formats, poll workers, equipment, as well as looking at voter awareness and education, explicitly ensuring nonpartisan races remain and are effectively communicated as such, maintaining strong partnerships with the county and school district, aligning with the true intent of this law, and ultimately remaining fiscally responsible in the cost of elections. It's important to note that when local elections appear on a full ballot, as we've discussed, our races will be placed at the bottom or on the back. Down-ballot undervoting is common due to voter fatigue, lack of voter education, and ballot design, as we've discussed tonight. This makes it harder for local candidates to be heard and break through the noise, and it increases the cost of campaigning, which can deter potential candidates. Additionally, when major elections occur only in even-numbered years, it becomes even more challenging to motivate turnout in odd years, as we've said, which is a challenge that we are already facing. More so, just as council member Hager said, the school board voted last night to move its election to June while this body is considering November, and so I acknowledge that it will affect local elections, as school board and city council races often drive interest in one another, and it affects our cost-sharing partnership potentially. But I believe that holding our election in November best aligns with the intent of this law, and it ensures college students have a meaningful opportunity to participate in local elections, as we've seen with the recent council member who served with us, and it aligns with the higher turnout election cycles even years, as council member Hager said. I really want to thank our city clerk, Bonnie Foster, for her work, adaptability, and commitment to coordinating with our partners and navigating all of this with minimal guidance, and I appreciate all the thoughtful conversations we've had together and with our partners and the public surrounding how to effectively implement this law. Ultimately, Brookings knows Brookings, so I encourage this conversation to continue to be holistic in our efforts in this community, acknowledging that voter turnout encompasses society's political atmosphere, accessibility of offices in the slate of campaigns, and voting accessibility and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Council member Wendell?
Thank you, mayor. Bonnie, I seem to remember that the law also clarified that the term of a successful candidate begins the first regular meeting after the election date. Is that correct?
Correct, so we will, so with November, so we'll have a November third election date. We will have to hold our canvas within seven days, and then they will take office at the first meeting of the next month.
Okay.
So elections in November, they'll take office first meeting in December.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that shift, and thank you, I, I didn't understand the beginning of the next month, so that's good to know. And then, I'm thinking through, you know, we're, we'll be moving into the two thousand twenty-six legislative session soon. I do know that folks are recognizing in communities all over the state as they're moving through the implementation of this law that was passed during the two thousand twenty-five session, that there are some challenges, and there are some areas that are not clearly defined in the law. There could be some improvements made, and I think we can all acknowledge that as we're considering implementation. I just think, in the best interest of communities throughout the state, I hope at the... I just think, in the best interest of communities throughout the state, I hope at the very least, this law can remain in place and not be modified during the 2026 session, because likely, a modification would take effect on July 1 of 2026, which just further complicates all of this. So if you're hearing legislative chatter during the upcoming session about potentially adjusting this law now, before we've even implemented it, please encourage your lawmakers to just let us live with this for a year. I think we all acknowledge it's not perfect, but I think making a change that will then take effect July 1 would introduce a whole new set of challenges for school districts and municipalities in the state. So I think it's good to discuss where there could be changes. We'll learn a lot this year that could be implemented down the road. But if you're hearing those conversations locally, just encourage your lawmakers not to make that change during the 2026 session. I think that would have a detrimental effect.
All right. Please call the roll.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Durin.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
All right. Move on to 11A, Other Business. Action on Resolution 25-100, a resolution transferring city manager contingency funds to city departments. Ashley Wrench, our finance director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is Resolution 25-100, authorizing a contingency transfer of $34,000 to support unanticipated forestry department needs in 2025. The transfer includes $11,000 for temporary pay, $11,000 for workers' compensation, and $12,000 for equipment maintenance. These needs are primarily driven by ongoing Emerald Ashbore remediation efforts, which have increased equipment use and seasonal staffing needs. The workers' compensation increase reflects the citywide premium increases, with forestry representing one of our highest-risk operations. Sufficient contingency funds are available, and this transfer ensures continued safe and effective operations. Staff recommends approval of this resolution as presented, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ashley. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Council have questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Durin.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
All right. Move on to 11B, Action on Resolution 25-099, a resolution transferring capital improvement plan sinking funds. Ashley Wrench will also present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is Resolution 25-099, allocating funding for the chiller replacement and boiler upgrades at the City-City Administration Building. Earlier this year, council approved a preliminary development agreement with Johnson Controls to develop design and cost proposals. While the final PDA is not yet complete, procurement timing requires funding to be in place so the project can proceed once the contract is ready. The total project cost is estimated at $1.32 million, shared 48% city and 52% county. The city's estimated share is $634,111, which this resolution allocates from the city's CIP sinking funds. The project will move forward through an authorized cooperative purchasing method, and council approval of the final contract will not be required under existing authority. Staff recommends approval of this resolution as presented, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Public comment on this item? Council questions, comments? I guess I'd like to make a statement. We started doing this sinking fund quite a few years ago, and it's good that we have this money in place now, just for incidental things that we don't expect to have to do. This building is relatively new, and we did find out that we have equipment that is either faulty or not working correctly. It's good that we have that funding instead of having to wait for a rainy day where we can gain the money on it. So I think it's, it's smart that we've done that. I have to, I have to compliment staff for convincing us this was a good thing to do, because we have quite a few buildings that we don't know what's going to happen, they're aged, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands. How much is left in that fund after this, Ashley?
Sure. So the sinking fund started 2025 with $984,549. We've had three transfers this year, one for fire apparatus maintenance, chiller PDA, and then the splash pad, for a total of $149,302. That leaves us with $835,247. If you take that $634,111 out, you have $101,136. And then at the end of 2025, we will allocate our budgeted $150,000 contribution, which will put us at $351,136 at the end of the year. $150,000 is also budgeted for 2026, and that will leave us with $501,136 to work with.
Thank you. I figured you'd have those numbers in front of us, so appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Durin.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Okay. Item 11C, Action on City Attorney Legal Services Agreement for 2026. Paul Bracino, our city manager, will present this item.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. In 2025, the city council elected a contract with Woods Fuller Schultz Smith PC with Vince as our city attorney, and Susan and Seth as our assistant city attorneys. We have in the agreement today an extension for that agreement for 2026. Included in the pack, it also includes their hourly rates. We have budgeted roughly $200,000 for this service, with an additional $4,000 budgeted for additional professional mentorship and training costs associated with those services. As noted, every year, that amount just fluctuates depending on the amount of work created by our organization for those legal services. The city's been very happy with our services this past six to eight months that we've had Vince and his crew. I will say it's been a learning curve for all of us, but I, it feels like we're really hitting our rhythm now when utilizing their services. We do appreciate Vince, as well as the rest of his team, to help us through our legal matters. And with that, we recommend approval of the contract for 2026.
Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Vince, this will be a good time if you want to chime in.
I just wanted to say thank you, and I let Bonnie and company know that I would make myself available for questions, and then I would hang up and allow you guys to complete your discussions with me out of the room. So I just wanted to say thank you, really appreciate, we love the work, and Brookings is a great place.
All right. Any council comments, questions? Vince, it has been a joy working with you. You've driven up here a couple times in some pretty crappy weather, and I appreciate your initiative on some of the things, and where you've quickly, made a quick turnaround on some of the subjects that we've had, where you've had to book it on the way up. I remember one time your son was driving, and you had to read the rules on a particular item. I just appreciate that you had done that for us. Look forward to next year. Councilmember Durin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just echo those thoughts, that I knew that when we decided to work with a firm after the retirement of our previous attorney, that it could be an increase in cost. But I really do think that we have seen, as a city council and as a city, the benefit of the breadth of knowledge that this firm brings, and the quick turnarounds, as the mayor has said, and just, I appreciate all of your working on the numerous projects that have been brought up over the last year.
All right. Paul, you have any comments?
Yep.
Okay. Please call the roll. I should stop, stop. Holly, do you have any comments or questions?
Just echoing the sentiment of thanks to Vince and his team. It's been great working with them.
All right.
Thank you. I will hang up. I appreciate it.
All right. Please call the roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Durin.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
All right. We will be going into executive session, but we'll talk a little bit about the meeting for the 16th next week. We do have one, obviously, a couple change orders. We will be talking about golf course water sourcing contract, or bid, award, or deny. We also have Edgebrook Glove House management agreement, a couple first readings on conditional use permit for rock crushing and disposal of electric waste at landfill. And then a couple second readings. We also have additional, or wine, a casino adding a wine license. And we do have an annexation request. And then also, the assistant city manager will be giving us a report next week for, there, there we go. All right. Any additional topics that the council would like to have in future agendas? Okay. We will go on now, executive session. Item 13A, executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2.1 for discussion, the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor. Entertain a motion to, before I say that, we will be doing an action after we get out of executive session, so, just so everybody knows. And then we will adjourn immediately after that. Entertain a motion to enter an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
Holly, are you there?
Yes, I'm on.
Perfect.
All right, well, we've came out of executive session, and before we start talking about Paul's compensation, I'd like to have Casey, our HR department director, to kind of explain to the public and ourselves and reiterate why where we're at, where we're at, and the compensation that we had with Paul, and we're moving up ranges in compensation.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So last year, City Council had tasked the HR department with going out and doing a comprehensive salary and benefits study for the city manager position. And the reason being is making sure that you were equipped as council with information based on the market for what the appropriate salary and benefits are for a city manager, right? In the event, let's say Paul were to choose to leave and we needed to recruit, you need to be equipped with having that information so that you know what the appropriate pay and benefits would be for that position. So once we got those marching orders, we went and identified some consultants that could possibly help us perform this service. And one of the key aspects that we, key criteria for those consultants was those that could do a nationwide look. So if Paul were to leave, and again, Paul, I'm sorry, I keep talking about you in this way, but if Paul were to leave, we needed to, we knew that we were going to be recruiting for this position nationwide, so it was really important that we took a nationwide look at what these wages and benefits would be for the city manager. We found one consultant that could help do this service for us at that level. MGT, they're a very respected consultant within the industry that performs a number of different services, including salary and benefit surveys. So once we identified that consultant and started working with them, we identified comparable communities, right, those that are peers with Brookings all across the United States. And once, once we gathered that salary and benefits data from them, we got some good information back. The first thing being is our city manager wage range was out of adjustment. We saw a lot of market changes with, with salary on the city manager side, and it was almost 15% off of our peers. So the first thing that told us is we need to adjust our range, and the consultants recommended taking the position at a grade 48 currently and bringing it up to a grade 51. That would account for that 15% change. The second piece was looking at our benefits, and good news is, we are really close on benefits. Most of it, we are pretty much right in line, but there were some opportunities to be competitive with our 457 contributions, the retirement side. MGT had recommended increasing the 457 contribution. We're currently funding at 9%, they recommended bringing that up to 11% and then offering a catch-up provision, because once an employee turns age 50, they're eligible to contribute up to an additional IRS limit. So they recommended offering the catch-up contribution as well. So what this did is it really equipped you as city council members with good market-based data. This isn't based on feeling, right? This is really what we saw from peer communities, again, what we would need to pay both on the salary and benefit side, if we needed to recruit for this position, or to make sure that we're being competitive with an incumbent already in that role. And then with that, we have ways that we've implemented salary surveys in the past, consistent with all of their staff, that would be an increase based on how many grades that person changed. Paul's position, or the city manager position, needs to move three grades. Historically, what we've done with staff in the past is offer a 2% for each grade that they had moved, therefore making the recommendation a 6% increase from the market study. I'll stand by for any questions.
All right, before we do any kind of a motion, has anybody got any questions or comments as far as what we had for your consultant, Councilman Doran?
I just had a comment on kind of our decision-making process and our evaluation. I just wanted to say that I'm very proud to live in Brookings and to be part of a highly functional team that serves our community. I want to do a shout-out to Paul, that he really exemplifies enthusiasm in his work and community partnerships, and he pushes our community and staff forward in how we can work, live, and play. And when I think of the success in the services that I like to enjoy as a, as a private resident, I think we're really successful as a community because of incredible staff and leadership like Paul. So when we looked at, look at this every year, we look at the list of accomplishments and what we have achieved as a city. We've worked on downtown, affordable housing, marketplace development, and many more projects, and we've seen Paul as an employee take the policy and vision that City Council sets forward and finds a way to effectively and efficiently implement it with staff. And just like what Casey said, we evaluated industry market rates through peer city competitive compensation. We did a performance review. We looked at matching with our internal practices, and we really looked through the lens of Paul the person and the city manager position objectively. So I'm comfortable with our motion and getting this bump to have Paul the person and the city manager positioned where they should be. And I value that we have an effective city manager and recognize that the salary and benefits need to reflect the level of responsibility, expertise, and accountability required, and I support this benefits package. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, I think I've gotten the motion written, how it should be stated. I will make the motion and ask for a second. I move a city mayor to increase compensation for a city manager, Paul Bercino, from range 48, which was at a max of 2,000, or 207,272.45, to range 51, which is a range of $177,350 up to a max of $239,944. The compensation that we would give, we're offering Paul this year, and he already has kind of formally accepted a little bit, 2% merit increase plus a 2% increase per range for a total of an 8% increase in his current salary, which would put him at $224,102.99, right? Correct? Correct. All right. 102, yeah, 224,102.99. And also, we are bringing the 457 compensation, deferred compensation, we are bringing that up to IRS limit. And then we're also including the catch-up contribution after age 50, which we need to include in next year's budget to be included in this also for future reference at the IRS total contribution. With that being said, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Now, if we have any public comment on this item. Okay, move on. Council have comments? Holly, I'll let you go first.
I just want to say thank you to Paul, and I just want to also highlight, I think, what, some of what Councilmember Doran was saying, in that this is not just a merit adjustment, it is truly a market adjustment as well. I appreciate all the work that went into doing the study with the consultant to make sure that the range for the position itself is in the right place. This was something that we had requested last year, and to see that that was taken seriously and really fully vetted, I think, is a great reflection of the HR team that our city has. But again, thanks to Paul, this is not only well-earned and deserved, but also that he gets him into the right range. So I'm very comfortable with where we're at here.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Paul, I've, I've really enjoyed working with you this year again. I think you're getting due compensation for the work that you've done for us, and expect to see you here until we get you more grades than you already are. So that means I want you here for a long time. Please call the roll.
Hager?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tiltelburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Doran?
Aye.
Motion passes. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.